Good evening and welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council Meeting for Monday, April 9th, 2018. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing Oh Canada. Oh Canada, our home and native land, true patriot love in all thy sons command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Thank you to the National Film Board of Canada for the images of our country and to alumni of our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. Before we start our meeting and the adoption of previous council meeting minutes, I just wanted to make a brief acknowledgement of the tragedy in Saskatchewan with the Humboldt Broncos Hockey Team. Our community and many communities across Canada obviously stand in solidarity with not just the residents in the community of Humboldt, but also with the families and the lives that were impacted by this tragedy. Just ask if everyone in attendance tonight would join me in taking a brief moment of silence before we start our council meeting. Thank you, everyone. So we'll move on to the adoption of our previous council meeting minutes. We have a motion for that set of minutes from March 26th. Councillor Menhoss.
Thank you, Mayor Will Given. I move the council approved agenda, approve the minutes of the city council meeting held Monday, March 26th, 2018 as presented.
Thanks very much, Councillor Menhoss. Any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Anything that we need to correct before we formally adopt them? Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. And then I'd look for a motion to adopt the Joint City/County Council Meeting Minutes. Councillor Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council approve the minutes of the city council, joint council meeting held Monday, March 26th, 2018 as presented.
Thanks very much, Councillor Blackburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. That brings us to the adoption of the agenda. Were there any items that we needed to amend on our agenda? If not, Councillor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council adopt the agenda as presented.
Thanks very much, Councillor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on the agenda? Again, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well, and that brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity that we have at every regular city council meeting for anyone in the community to come and address council on any community-related matter, so long as it isn't the subject of a public hearing, which I don't think we have any of those this evening anyhow. We had a couple of delegations let us know ahead of time that they wish to be here, and the first was John McDonald with respect to safe consumption site and mobile location guidelines. Mr. McDonald, are you here this evening? Yeah, if you'd like to, if you'd like to come forward, you don't need to introduce yourself because we've got that in the record. Thanks for letting us know in advance that you'd be here, but welcome. If you'll just take the presenter's table there and make sure one of the microphones is kind of pointed towards you, we're happy to hear from you. Welcome.
Thanks for letting me speak tonight. So what I'm here to talk about, or what I asked to come and talk about, was locations of safe consumption sites in town here. I'm a father of two young kids, and I have a responsibility to them. That includes questioning the location of a service, like a safe consumption site that's near our home, and what that means for my family's safety. So saying that, in the past week, I've had a chance to learn quite a bit about the service and the predicted impact that it's going to have on our community. I gained some insight into why, why they're choosing a method that allows them to get into operation quickly. And combined with that information, combine that information with the specific locations they're going to operate in, or where I understand they're, they're going to operate in at this point, I feel my immediate concerns have been addressed right now. I recognize there's problems faced by, by intervenant drug users in our community, and I can't speak to the merits of a safe consumption site. I don't know much about that, but I can appreciate the intention everybody's standing behind it. My understanding is that HIV North is going to continue to work with the city moving forward, especially on future locations and their permanent location as far as interviewing other stakeholders like the adjacent land users, and that those concerns aren't going to be ignored. So in contrast to the action that I've written when I applied to speak here, I, I won't be advocating for bylaws to be enacted prior to them operating their mobile site. I think that the problem that they're addressing has enough hurdles for them to manage at this point, that I don't believe that, that further burdens need to be imposed on them for them to operate responsibly. It's not to say that we need to ignore any of these things or ignore the bylaws in the future, but I think that for the time being, to get them operating, you know, I, I'm not going to, to stand in their way. So that's all I have to say. I appreciate you taking the time to listen.
Absolutely. We do, we create an opportunity for councillors to ask questions if they want. You know, you come and, you have a few minutes, and then if councillors have any questions, we just sort of offer that opportunity. And I see Councillor Resi has a question.
Well, thank you, Mr. McDonald, for coming here. I appreciate it, and we've had conversations about this in the past, and I'm just kind of curious if you got a sense of where your neighbors are at with this, and if they're feeling similar to you.
I don't know that, that they are for sure. I think that a lot of our concern is based around, we're not sure about what's going to happen in the future, so that there's, there's locations that have been loosely defined, but they're not, there's not necessarily any bylaws right now to, like, there's no enforcement for us to say that if they chose to relocate somewhere else, we don't really have any means to, to do anything about it. So I don't think that that fear is gone. We, we still are concerned about that, especially because I, you know, in the, the research that I've found, there's lots of benefits, I think, to that, that service, to that, to, first of all, to the community in general, and of course, to the users of that service. But I think in the immediate vicinity, I suspect it's, it's fairly fair for us to say that there's probably going to be some consequence there, not necessarily positive. So I, I think that my neighbors are still a bit concerned that, that possibly we would see that site in, in our location. I know that I am, and I do know that I've spoke to a couple of, of them tonight who are concerned about that specifically, but.
Any other questions for the delegation? I, I guess I would just say, Mr. McDonald, I appreciate you being here this evening. Appreciate the fact that when, it sounds as though you've done some of your own research proactively since you booked the time to come and speak to council, and I appreciate the fact that you have a really balanced perspective on this that advises caution, but is open to the possibilities. I guess if I can relate on behalf of the city, our intent is to work closely with HIV North to ensure that the process that they develop is robust, and that residents like you and your neighbors get the notification that you need and the input that you should deserve to have. And I would hope that you continue to stay engaged and make sure that, from a process perspective, that it meets your expectations. And so absolutely look for opportunities to stay engaged, but thanks so much for seeking out information proactively and making sure that you're informed. Much appreciated.
Thanks again.
Okay. The next was Alan Ruffnag. Alan, are you here? Yeah. Mr. Ruffnag, if you'd like to come forward. I'm sorry, I probably didn't get your last name exactly right. My apologies, but if you're more than welcome to correct me, and welcome.
Good evening, Council. Ruffianj is my last name.
Thank you.
I live on 992206th Avenue. I was here last fall in concerns with the parking congestion in that area. Council was supposed to get back to me on a recommendation or their findings, but nobody ever did. So in the meantime, I went to the law office and I dealt with it, and I'm happy with the outcome, but lately I've seen an increase in permits being given to residents of the apartment, and I'm wondering why that is, why those residents should have street parking when they have their own parking lot. In that area, right off of 100th Street where I live, they all park in that first quarter of the block, so that's the issue. There's got to be a certain number of permits should be allotted for certain square footage or whatever, like, the last snowfall after the greater come by, one of those residents left his vehicle on the street. So now you've got an extra pile of snow in the middle of the street where nobody parks, so it moves parking up farther. The question is why they're giving permits to people that live in that apartment.
Okay, so the question, I remember when you made the presentation last time about the law office, and so the question this time is more specifically around the, how permits are dedicated to the apartment building that's on the same street?
Yes.
Okay, I'm not sure if we have that information at hand today, but that's the nature of your concern, and so as you might know, towards the end of our meeting is actually where we deal with delegation business, and I will personally follow up with you if you don't stick around for the conclusion of the meeting to hear sort of where it goes, but I'll make sure that I personally follow up you, with you with some information.
I have another concern in that area as well, if I could bring that forward.
Sure, absolutely.
So there's a walkway, crosswalk lights at 105th Street, and then lights on 108th Street, and we live in between that. So in the summertime, it gets very noisy, and I thought we had a noise bylaw, but I haven't seen no, nobody controlling noise, or especially the motorbikes and these diesel trucks with straight pipes. It seems to be getting worse every year, but.
Okay, okay. So the question is concerns around noise?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Anything else that you wanted to bring forward to council?
Well, I guess if I got one other one. 108th Street, all the truck traffic. How many more years are we going to have that truck traffic through town? 108th Street through the bypass? All those trucks coming from the south are loaded with mud, and where do they deposit it? Right down that alley. And any newcomers to town, I don't think they would think this as much of a tourist area when they'd see that.
Okay, thanks very much for your presentation this evening. Thanks for being here, and I'll make sure that I follow up with you directly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anybody else that wished to present to council? You don't have to let us know ahead of time that you're coming, but we always appreciate it. Now, was there anybody else that wished to come forward to present to council with any community-related matter, any matter that's on our council agenda this evening? Okay, seeing nobody else coming forward, then we will close the delegation portion of our agenda. We have no public hearings, as I said before, no items of unfinished business. That takes us to item number eight, Reports and 8.1, and I will look to council to introduce or make a motion with respect to Bylaw C-1248A, the Intermunicipal Development Plan Technical Amendments. I'd look for a motion for second reading. Councillor Resi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that we give second reading to Bylaw C-1248A, being an amendment to the Intermunicipal Development Plan.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor Resi. So open for discussion and debate. Any questions, comments, discussion and debate? Councillor Thiessen, I see you in the queue. Are you, with questions? I'll just relate that this was, arises as a result of the Joint City/County Council Meeting that we passed the minutes for previously. The first reading happened at our, at our regular city council meeting, and then we jointly got together with the county to discuss. Councillor Palat.
Thanks, Mayor Given. It's not regarding this motion specifically. I guess I just wanted to make sure I didn't get out of queue on a motion I'd like to make around this.
Okay. Sort of business arising?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Thanks very much. I will make sure not to go past. Okay, so if there isn't any other discussion or debate on the technical amendments being proposed, the Intermunicipal Development Plan, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Resi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that we give third reading to Bylaw C-1248A, being an amendment to the Intermunicipal Development Plan.
Thanks very much, Councillor Resi. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? I guess we didn't give it an introduction here this evening necessarily, but just for anybody that might be watching, the technical amendments generally are of the nature of recognizing that the city of Grand Prairie is actually annexed an area, and so the maps in the plan are actually outdated, so essentially recognizes the new city boundary as it, as it exists today. The plan hadn't been updated since 2010, and in its sort of existing form, unless we pass these changes, it wouldn't recognize the city's current boundary. So the nature of the amendments was really that of updating the, updating the maps and a few other minor technical things. If there's no other discussion or debate, I'll call for the vote on third reading. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and I guess that brings me back to you, Councillor Palat. I said I wouldn't miss you, and I, and I haven't.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I, I can appreciate that we did these motions, and it's more out of respect for some technical changes on this, but I, I just want to make sure, I guess my intent with the motion I want to make is to make sure that we don't miss maybe some more conversation that we should be having about other changes that aren't necessarily technical in nature. So I'll, I'll try this motion here of, I'd like to direct the mayor rate the county of Grand Prairie requesting the initiation of a comprehensive review of the IDP.
Okay, okay. Thanks very much, Councillor Palat. That motion would be in order. I'll just say that I would support the motion. I think the technical amendments are sort of the bare minimum to recognize the actual, you know, city boundary, but the plan does say that it was supposed to be reviewed every three years, has not had a comprehensive review since, since its adoption back in 2010, so it's obviously well overdue, and we've also had significant changes to the Municipal Government Act since the plan was adopted. There are some new requirements for intermunicipal development plans, so those are all probably those and others, I'm sure, some, some useful reasons to initiate a more comprehensive dialogue with the county about the IDP. Any other discussion or debate, questions or comments on Councillor Palat's motion? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and that'll bring us to item 8.2, Development Permit PL-160252, Paving and Landscaping Amendments in the DC-14 District. This is where council technically changes hats. We're now acting as the development authority for the municipality, which we don't always do. Typically, that's handled at a committee meeting, and so this process, I'm sure there's something that'll mess up as we go through this process, just because we don't do it all the time here, but I'm going to look first to administration for an introduction.
Good afternoon, Mayor Given and members of council. For those people watching tonight on our YouTube channel, I'm Matt Hulse, Development Officer 2 at the city, and we're here tonight for this development permit for the Karen. And I believe we know the history of this property quite well, but just to refresh everybody, the location of the property is shown in the pictures on the top of this slide here, and the property's on DC-14, and council is the sole development authority for this district. To give you a little bit of a background information on this development permit, the developer unfortunately was unable to complete the required paving and landscaping works, so upon the developer's request, council granted an extension in 2016, and that extension that was granted in 2016, the date had passed, and the paving and landscaping works were still not completed, so a second extension was requested. However, this time it was requested until September 30th, 2022. The applicant also requested a reduction in the number of parking stalls. So after a lengthy discussion at that council meeting, council kind of more or less took a timeout and referred the development permit to a council committee of the whole for a further discussion to hone in on some of the issues that are really the meat of this development permit. So the council committee of the whole meeting was held on February 6th of this year, and four issues in particular were discussed at that meeting. One was a review of the proposed sanctions for noncompliance, the possibility of a time extension of up to five years for the completion of the paving, the completion of the landscaping by this coming July, and justification for the number of required parking stalls at the Karen. The council committee of the whole, or CCW as we call it, made four motions that are specific to this development permit. Committee recommended a fine, that committee recommended council issue a fine of $250 for the noncompliance of this development permit. The fine has been issued and delivered to the applicant landlord, and have received confirmation that that fine was actually paid on March 20th. Committee also directed administration to amend the development permit to require landscaping improvements and protective paved curbing around the landscaped areas to be completed by no later than July 31st of 2018. So in that regard, we have proposed conditions 10 and 13, that the developer provides nine trees and protective paved curbing adjacent to the landscaping areas along 105th Avenue to be completed by no later than July 31st. And the developer is also required to provide four trees and protective paved curbing by no later than the same date, July 31st of 2018. There's also conditions 11 and 12. Condition 11 is that the developer is responsible for the landscaping of the city boulevard up to the curb line of the road, and that's a typical condition for all commercial or large residential development permits, such as for the Karen. The developer shall also enter into a landscaping agreement with the city of Grand Prairie regarding the professional installation and protective, protective poured curbing adjacent to the landscaping, and maintenance of the landscaping for two years following installation. Another motion was regarding paving. Committee, Committee of the whole directed administration to amend the development permit to extend the deadline for the completion of paving by no later than July 31st of 2019, and this, this is the paving and the line painting. The curbing, of course, is in with the landscaping that I referred to earlier. The paving and the line, line painting, as I said, is completed by July 31st of 2019. Also included is conditions four and seven. The number of parking stalls remains at 69 parking stalls, which includes the parking stalls for the existing parking lot on 104th Avenue and the parking stalls for this new parking lot on 105th Avenue. And the developer in owner is required to, as per amended development permit, to enter into a paving agreement with the city that requires the completion of paving by no later than July 31st of 2019. Regarding securities, committee also directed administration to amend the development permit to include a condition for the submission of securities for the landscaping. In this regard, we note that the motion is limited to landscaping securities. However, we do recommend that the cost of the paved curbing is also included in, in these securities, as the curbing would protect the landscaping from damage caused by vehicles. So the landscaping securities were determined using quotes from reputable landscaping companies in, in around the city. The quotes, which are available in your agenda packages, include the installation of 13 trees, preparation of just over 4,000 square feet or 379 square meters in landscaped area, maintenance of the landscaping for two years following installation, and this includes weekly watering, inspection for diseases, corrective pruning, and, and so on. The average of the landscaping quotes is $21,998. For the securities, the poured curbing was based on a per linear price for the poured curbing. The per linear curbing price multiplied by the dimensions of the parking lot, 10127 and 10131105 Avenue, came to 2,000, or $12,301. The total of the average landscaping securities and the poured curbing securities is $34,299. Council may choose to require the full amount of these securities, percentage of these securities, or no securities at all. Administration does recognize that the usual template for the development permit conditions that require the securities was used in the preparation of this draft development permit for tonight's council meeting. So on, on top of that, we also recommend that condition night, condition 14 of this draft development permit is amended to require the securities to be submitted by a specified date. That specified date that we recommend is May 31st of 2018. The completion of the landscaping works again is July 31st of 2018. So it was about, it was roughly two months that we would have the securities before the landscaping work is completed. We received a alternate parking lot design prior to tonight's council meeting. So this is the alternate design pictured here. We did have questions about what is proposed in this blank area here, and I since colored it green. The applicant has indicated that his plans include a community garden in this area. Just to give you a comparison, for comparison purposes, this is the alternate design. This is the approved parking lot design on this slide, and then I have the slides, both designs side by side. The 105th Avenue is in a different direction on, on each of the slides, so the one on the right for the alternate plan is turned sideways, so 105th Avenue faces the same way on this slide, on this side by side comparison, but I'll just, just summarize the, the changes. The approved design has an entrance off of 105th Avenue here. The alternate design takes that entrance out and moves it off the laneway that runs between 104th Avenue and 105th Avenue. And then in place of the entrance that is now taken out, that area would be landscaped, and then there'd be a little bit, a little bit more landscaping here, which would be the community garden. Administration does prefer the alternate design in principle that the applicant has submitted, and our reasons for that is the, the elimination of the access onto 105th Avenue. There is also an inclusion of additional amenity space, that being the community There is also an inclusion of additional amenity space, that being the community garden for residents. There is less area eventually to be asphalt and concrete, so that would equal less runoff. Although this plan might result in additional landscaping costs, the paving costs, we believe, would likely be less. And there would also be no need for driveway access constructed to city road standards, and that's a pretty big expense. So that would be less cost overall, and something that's less cost overall is something that is more palatable for the applicant, and we believe that's more likely something would get done with this alternate parking lot design. However, we do note, and this is why we support it in principle, if this plan is supported, we recognize that this plan will require the removal of two parking spaces. And I'll point that out here because, as you can see with these four trees in the easterly portion of the parking lot, the branches for those trees would encroach over these two parking spaces here, and then the drive off between the two parking spaces. So if council chooses the alternate plan, then we would have to slightly amend the conditions to require 67 parking stalls instead of 69 parking stalls. Council may choose to stay with the current plan for the parking lot or opt for the alternate plan. If the alternate plan is chosen, the development permit conditions and the schedules will be amended accordingly to reflect the new plan. For stakeholder engagement, in advance of tonight's council meeting, notices were sent to adjacent landowners, persons who submitted a letter of concern, signed a petition, or attended a previous council meeting or committee meeting for this development permit. This is similar to the stakeholder engagement measures taken prior to all meetings regarding this development permit. So to conclude, we recommend, or administration recommends, that council amend this development permit to require landscaping improvements and protective poured curbing around the landscaping areas to be completed by no later than July 31st of 2018. Extend the deadline for the completion of paving as specified in the current development permit to no later than July 31st of 2019, including a condition for the submission of securities for landscaping effective in 2018, specifically May 31st, 2018. And lastly, council may choose to stay with the current parking lot design or choose the alternate parking lot design. However, the parking stalls would have to be slightly reduced by two spaces if the alternate design is chosen. And if the alternate design is chosen, then the development permit conditions and the schedules of the development permit will be amended to reflect the new design. And that concludes my presentation. We're open for discussion, comments, and questions. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Mr. Ellis. So we'll have an opportunity for questions for administration, then we'll end up coming back around. We'll have delegations that present in support or in opposition. Have an opportunity for questions from them. Then finally, we'll close with an opportunity for any closing questions we might have for management. Counselor Palat.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Just a question for administration, maybe just for me to clarify. If I'm understanding this properly, so when we do the landscaping securities and the paving securities, it would be 100% of the amount? And once the work's completed, 50% will be released upon completion and the rest two years later? Is that correct?
Through Mayor Given, answer Counselor Pilla's question. With the paving securities, the securities are typically released once the work is done and satisfactorily completed. With the landscaping securities, the securities are typically released by 80% when the work is complete, or sorry, 60% when the work is completed, and the remaining 40% is released after two years. This is kind of a special development permit, and council is the development authority. So council can release the securities by every timeline it sees fit. But that's how it's typically done. Regarding the amount, of course, again, we can require the full amount, a percentage of that amount, or of course, not at all.
Counselor Platt.
Yeah, just a follow-up question on that, then. Just looking at the quotes that we received, one of them had two-year maintenance basically in the quote. So I'm just kind of getting a gut feeling that we're asking to put up security for something that's already kind of been built into one of the quotes. But is that normal in a process like this where when we receive a quote, it would have the maintenance period built right into it as well?
Mr. Wright?
Mayor Given, Counselor Platt, sorry, just to clarify, the maintenance period is focused on the landscaping that council's looking at. So that is typical to have a two-year maintenance period to make sure that trees and shrubs survive. The reference to the paving, this is, the quote is on just the concrete curbing as the actual sort of securities and not on the whole paving area.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Platt. Counselor Blackburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a question about the security amounts. If we were to go with the new design, which presumably is going to cost less money, would be, we'd be adjusting the security amounts that we require?
Mr. Ellis?
Through Mayor Given, yes, we would have to get a quote for the new design. Our quotes are only based on the current design. But the new design would presumably result in less securities. And that could be a technical amendment. It wouldn't change the essence of this development permit. So we can do that more or less like in-house. We wouldn't have to come back to another council meeting.
Sure. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Blackburn. Counselor Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I've got two questions. Just as I'm asking, my first one, is it possible to get the alternate plan up on the screen again? I just want to check one thing before I ask that question. And then, just before I ask a question about that, just going back to securities, I'm curious, what are, do we have any land use bylaw provisions that let us, if we don't take securities and the trees die in one year, that allow us to make sure they get replanted again? Or if we take two-year securities and then this gets paved in a year and they actually die three years from now because of that, to force those trees getting planted again? I'm just trying to figure out, besides securities, do we have any mechanisms to make sure trees survive in this area?
Mr. Wright?
Mayor Given, Counselor Bressi, the standard process is the two-year maintenance period. So then if they do die beyond then, typically, we're not following up as administration or the city. It's okay, you've got to replant them because after two years, the expectation that they are settled and going to survive.
And is that just because that's not a usual practice, or because we don't have any mechanisms in the land use bylaw to do so if we so desire?
Mayor Given, Counselor Bressi, exactly. That's just always been the practice for the two-year period.
So do we have mechanisms in the land use bylaw if we did want to follow up, if we wanted to go against our usual practice?
Mayor Given, Counselor Bressi, we could certainly bring something forward to council to look at an amendment to the land use bylaw, thinking that the site plan has been approved or the landscaping plan with these trees. It's just that it's always been the two-year maintenance. But it certainly could be justified to say that we could go back if we had provision in the land use bylaw after two years to basically say, look, if the trees have died, you have to replant.
Thank you. And then a question on a different topic. I noticed on the alternate plan that it's washed rock instead of a grassed area. Is there an administrative opinion on why we'd require grassed in the development permit and if one's preferable to the other?
Mr. Ellis?
Through Mayor Given, grass is certainly preferred. The washed rock isn't ideal, but we did seek the input from Parks Operations. And they can live with the washed rock, provided that the trees are planted in sufficient mulched planting beds that are large enough and deep enough, and that everything is professionally installed. And the landscaping company that installs trees would make sure that happens.
Thank you. And what's the reason for preferring grass?
Grass typically retains water a lot better than rock. Water obviously just simply evaporates off the rock, and then the rock heats up around the trees. So if the mulched planting beds aren't big enough, then it basically creates like an oven-like environment around the trees, and then that just dries the water out even more. But those concerns can be largely mitigated if the sufficient mulch beds are provided around the base of the tree.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Counselor Bressi. I don't see anybody else in the queue with any questions for administration at this point. So I would ask if there's anyone here to speak in support or speak to the development permit PL 160252. Is anyone who's interested to speak to this matter? Mr. Cameron, if you'd like to come forward.
Hello. Thank you, Mayor Given and council. Another opportunity to speak with you. I'm largely in agreement with everything that Matt has shared, in particular, the alternate plan. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with it, or if it's easy for him to bring his back. It's a little more colorful than mine. I listen to what some of the surrounding residents had said, and one of their concerns was that additional access onto 105th. So we actually worked to see if we could reconfigure it. So this is what we came up with to help avoid that. I also think that band of landscaping is going to look better, be more appealing. And then, not sure if it would ever happen, but in the case of future development, this parking lot layout would be better suited for that also. To speak to a couple of the other things, it sounds like securities is one of your concerns. I'd like to point out that as part of affordable housing, council has the ability to waive securities, and they did do that on the original Karen project. And everything was completed before anybody moved in. There was never a concern. Our trees are thriving. We have washed rock all around them. I think it looks quite good. Karen is literally a pile of rocks, so that, you know, it kind of fits with our theme there. So I sort of questioned the need for securities. I would suggest we even exceeded what would have been required. We have a number of flower planters. We have quite a nice bicycle storage, custom smoking area. We provided rubber mulch in the back where people were tending to sit and play with their kids. We also have picnic tables. So I would like, if you would trust, that we will actually do our best to meet or exceed the requirements. It is, well, as you know, I do live there. It is important to me what my neighborhood looks like and how things are completed. So it's not that we don't want to meet that. The other piece of it, obviously, professionals charge a certain amount. If you do require those securities, that will literally take the money away that I have available to do the work. So that, you know, would make it extremely difficult to be able to follow through this year. So I'd like you to take that into consideration. And one more piece that was brought up was the four trees, well, it wasn't specifically talked about, but the four trees that are not on the boulevard, the four Colorado spruce, those have already been planted. And I planted them myself, so it wasn't done professionally. However, I am committed to keeping those there and maintaining their health. If for some reason they don't thrive, I would happily replace them with a professionally planted tree. But at this point in time, unless there's a problem with them, I'd rather not dig out perfectly good trees and then spend another $500 on each new tree. So I think that's all I had to share. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for the delegation? Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Given, and thanks for coming in. Again, Mr. Cameron, maybe we can wait a year or something after this? I'm not sure. My question is just around the new alternative plan. So there's that strip for the community garden that's there. Is that just going to be a flat piece of ground that'll just be dirt or grass until it becomes a community garden? Or is it going to be bordered and like a raised flower bedder?
Mayor Given, Counselor Thiessen, our intention would be to have a number of raised garden areas. So right now, it's hard-packed gravel. And unless you designated something different, I think that's appropriate for us to build our raised gardens on. We've talked to a few groups about providing the materials, and I would hope it would become sort of a community effort within the building to sort of construct them. I also spoken to some people about providing sort of a protective fencing to, you know, stop people from going through there or disrupting the gardens. But at this point in time, I picture, you know, a couple of feet off the ground, so it's easy to access them, as well as a number of them, so that you can easily reach into the areas that you would be gardening. So, yeah.
That's great. Just one more question, if I may. You mentioned that if you had to pay the securities, it might impede your ability to get the curbing and the landscaping done. You also alluded to the fact that you have monies available to do the curbing and the landscaping right now, I guess that you would otherwise be paying the securities towards?
So I actually, quite some time ago, paid a deposit to the contractor, and that's still in place. However, that deposit's only about half of what you guys have come up with as a cost. I do think that I can do it more economically, still using professional tree planters and having Lindsay Juniper come and supervise that. But the rest of it, I do feel I can do it at a lower cost. And I literally moved all the rocks, the larger rocks, into the Karen area myself. So for the other portion of the Karen, and I would be planning to do a similar thing. So unfortunately, some of the choices, such as the poured curbing rather than the curbs that you can purchase and put in, they are the more expensive options. I recognize why you've chosen them. But in some ways, I'm more concerned about housing people than a parking lot. So I will absolutely do my best to meet your requirements. I am unable to do that financially if you require the securities.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Friesen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Thanks again for coming, Brad, and for working through this with us. You mentioned that you had, and I guess this would be on the 102nd Street side of the building, that you've got the rocks and the trees in there, and it looks really nice, and that you exceeded some expectations. And you alluded to that, perhaps buying some goodwill into waiving securities. I would suggest that some of that goodwill has eroded a bit in the time that it's taken to get this completed. So my question for you is, if we were to waive securities, but in exchange require that all the work be done this year, would you be able to meet that?
No. And also, I know it's a fine point, but this additional parking lot was something that the city has imposed in 2015, 2016, after the entire building was completed. There was no advance- was no advance plan to this. And before that, other city employees added over $900,000 to the cost of the project. So we're at a total of 1.5 million or more that the city has added to the project. So I understand that you feel frustrated that I maybe haven't met some of those criteria. But when you look at the amount of money that I've had to spend to meet requirements that I believe were unnecessary, I find that very frustrating. As it turns out, the city has not actually put any city money into the project. I feel as though the city should feel very committed towards affordable housing, and in a certain sense, put their money where their mouth is. And in this case, I, I would gladly have the city step in and finish it to their requirements if they would like to.
Just to be clear, it's not necessarily my frustration, but I am listening to your neighbors and hearing their frustration and the delay of getting the landscaping done. And, and that's important. So I, I recognize the 1.5 million or more that was added that fairly or unfairly as, as may be the case. What was the total value then of the project?
Right now, it's valued at 14 million. At the time, it was about a $10,000, or $10 million construction cost and a 1 million land value. On our own, we looked at the potential of maybe adding additional parking, or maybe adding a development behind the Karen. And it was at that point in time, the city required the additional parking. So at no point in time was, was there a plan in place. And I understand that the neighbors may be a little bit frustrated. But again, I, I don't see that frustration being equal to 1.5 million dollars of frustration, or the homes of 140 people that otherwise wouldn't have somewhere to live.
Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks, Counselor Friesen. Counselor Plott?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I guess my, I, just to kind of expand on Counselor Friesen's thought there, I guess my concern with that would be, Brad, is if, if you, if you can't put up the securities now and be able to do it, then how are you going to be able to do it in a year? If, if we didn't waive securities today, how are you actually going to go ahead with finishing this? Because if, if you have to put up securities and finish it, it's going to cost a lot more money to do that than to waive all the securities and just get it done this year. So I'm just kind of curious of how, how you're going to be able to finish this at all to that degree.
So, Mayor Given, Counselor Plott, at this point in time, I feel very confident that I can finish the landscaping through sort of my personal work, as well as the people that I have supporting me. The hard surfacing of the parking lot, I actually have no plan or no way to do that at this point in time. In fact, our mortgage payment is going up $6,000 this month over what it's been for the last three years. So, yeah, so I actually have, have no answer for you at this point in time, other than I have a whole year to figure it out.
Fair enough. Thanks.
Thanks very much, Mr. Cameron. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Any other questions for the delegation? Seeing none, thanks very much, Mr. Cameron. Thanks for being here this evening. Was there anybody else that wished to speak to development permit PL 160252? Is there anybody else that wished to speak to this development permit? Seeing nobody coming forward, then I would look to council for motion. Counselor Plott?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I guess we've got a few to make, so I'll start off with one of them. Hoping that, to make a motion that we amend to the, the alternate site plan that was presented today. I like the plan. It sounds like administration's fine with the plan. We'd have to amend it to 67 stalls and to go with the alternate plan.
Okay. That motion be in order, and that's probably the appropriate way to do that, was if there's any sort of changes, then we'll deal with them first, and then to approve the development permit as amended. Any discussion or debate on Counselor Plott's motion with respect to the alternate site plan? Any discussion or debate? Seeing nobody ringing in, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Okay. Any other motions arising? Any other amendments to the development permit? Counselor Plott?
I, I can really empathize with Brad on there, Mr. Cameron on this one. I, I'm a little concerned that we, I know as a, as a council, we like to see this project just get done. So I was really hoping that Counselor Friesen, throughout her idea, that that would be receptive. But enlightened that it doesn't sound like that is, I, I would like to try a motion that we would, that we wouldn't collect any securities for the project, but that it has to stay on the timelines that we had set in the original, or, or, no, it's probably the timelines that we had set within the development permit.
So, so your motion isn't intending to vary the timelines in the development permit that's in front of council? It's to waive the levies, or sorry, the, the securities?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. So just so we clarify, that's certainly within council jurisdiction. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I'm going to speak in support of Counselor Plott's motion. For me, affordable housing is very important, and maintaining affordability for the owners who are willing to take the risk to undertake it is good. I also like the fact that, that we're keeping it to the timelines. I think part of what we've already done is we've given a $250 fine, and I've wrestled with myself on this one. I don't see the need to have the securities, but I would like to maintain those timelines. And now that we've administered the first fine, there's a potential that if, there's an opportunity for the developer to, to generate some more goodwill, and start moving goodwill back into the direction of City, City Hall, of the neighbors, and by undertaking the landscaping requirements. I think that's a step in the right direction. If the developer's unable to, to meet our timelines, so, council, I believe it's in our authority to administer any type of fine within our land use bylaw. And that may be a way to, I guess, incent the developer to maybe stick to our timelines and generate some goodwill in the community, and hopefully, we can get this thing done, and everyone in the Karen area can be happy neighbors, administration of the city of Grand Prairie, the developer, and we can get something that we truly want and still be housing people and not be bankrupting anybody. So I'm in support of the motion.
Thanks, Counselor Thiessen. Counselor Blackburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. May I hear the motion again, please?
Sure. Second motion with respect to the waiver of, of securities.
I'm sorry, I thought I heard some reference to the timelines.
Yeah, so just in discussion, so Counselor Plott wasn't intending to amend the timelines as outlined in the development permit. The motion was to, for waiver of the securities.
So we'll be talking about the timeline separately, is that it?
Yeah.
The, the recommendation from administration is to extend some, some deadlines, and I'm, I'm hoping we'll have the opportunity to look at that. The original permit requires the deadlines to be, I've lost track.
So maybe, maybe I'll just, just so that we're 100% all on the same page, maybe I'll look to Mr. Ellis to review what the timelines are proposed in the development permit that's up for approval tonight. So if council took no action to amend the timelines with respect to completion, what would that say?
Through, Mayor Given, the landscaping and the poured curbing would be required by July 31st of 2018, and the paving or hard surfacing and line painting would be required by July 31st, 2019.
So that's what the development permit that's in front of us for approval currently says?
Correct.
Thank you. That's the clarification I needed. I would like to speak in favor of the motion. I do believe that if we end up with a concern that the work is not completed as per our expectations, the information that we're going to garner regarding enforcement may allow us to deal with any deficiencies at a later date. And so waiving the, the securities, I believe, would help to facilitate getting this job completed.
Thanks, Counselor Blackburn. I'll just note that I'm in support of the motion to waive the, waive the securities. I think it's in alignment with council policy 607, which allows for affordable housing projects to submit an application to do such a thing that's fully within council's authority. And as Mr. Cameron noted, that actually happened during the construction of the facility itself. And so had the landscaping securities been required at the time of construction, I think they would have been waived anyhow. So I think this is consistent with the standing city policy and, and the approach that we've taken on this property in the past. Is there any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Are there any other motions arising? Are any other amendments rising? And if there are not, then we would need a motion to approve development permit PL 160252 as amended. Counselor Thiessen?
So moved as amended, Mayor Given.
Okay. So a motion to approve that development permit. Any discussion or debate? Counsel Ressi?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just, the sentiment's already shared, but I didn't get to get in on the past discussion. So I just, I'm going to be voting in favor of this. And I'm glad that we're working with the developers, looking at this amended plan. I'm glad we're waiving securities. I just hope that, my view is, that when these deadlines do come, I hope we all take a really hard line. I'm excited to learn about enforcement orders. That, I think that's mostly the most likely mecca for us. But I think it's, we, we've worked, and I'm happy that we have worked. Now let's make sure that this happens. If this comes before us again, hopefully it doesn't.
Thanks, Counsel Ressi. I don't see anybody else in the queue, council. Then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. I think that handles all of our business related to this development permit, and we can move on into our community, committee business. Counselor Thiessen, I think you're first up with our Community Living Committee meeting, all right?
Looks that way, Mayor Given. I would move that council receive the minutes of the Community Living Committee meeting held Tuesday, March 27, 2018, as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Any errors or omissions? Anything we've got to change before we adopt it? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Thiessen?
So, thank you, Mayor Given. We had one, one motion coming out of the Living Committee meeting on the Community Opioid Response Task Force, and that is, I'm moving that council approve the terms of reference for the Community Opioid Response Task Force, and further endorse the administration resources as indicated. If you didn't read your minutes from this meeting, the administration resources as indicated is pertaining to, one, community social development, administrative staff, and then a min-staff to help with the work that would be involved along the opioid task force.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. And just, just for further clarity, this is identifying the fact that those are the in-house existing resources, and that this work would make up an addition to their existing work. So there are essentially no additional resources. This is just the city specifying that, that that level of support would be provided on an ongoing basis through existing in-house sources. Counselor Ressi?
Thank you, Mayor Given. And I did, I actually want to acknowledge you before we vote on this. I'm going to definitely be voting in favor of this, and I'm grateful to the mayor for striking this task force. As we're talking about social issues in our community and initiatives, there's always talk about funding, and my sense is that we're doing a pretty good job of funding things. But we, as a, as a city, could be doing a lot better job taking leadership and taking an organizational role in our community. And this is one area where we're stepping into that with this. So I'm grateful for that, and I just want to acknowledge that this is a good direction for our city to be going.
Thanks very much, Counsel Ressi. And on, on that acknowledgement, I'd also like to say that the city of Grand Prairie and myself were really honestly late to this game. I think that there are a lot of community agencies and individuals in the community who are in the game and feeling the effects firsthand well before the city of Grand Prairie formally became involved. Having said that, it's never too late to start. And so thanks for the kind words, but I think the credit really goes to the people that brought this to the attention of the community and to council, and made it a, an issue that the city of Grand Prairie had to get involved in. So thanks very much. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Thiessen, anything else you want to highlight from that seven minutes?
Yeah, we had three delegations come in, largely from the Arts District of our, of our great community. We had Grand Prairie Live Theater come in with a presentation, the Grand Prairie Art Gallery, as well as the Grand Prairie International Street Performers presentation. It was a world-class round of delegations at Community Living that day. We also received a letter of correspondence from the Catholic School Board asking us if we would entertain the thought of providing a service site for their Kensington area, of which committee decided that we would, we would move the, I guess, the, the point of having a service site or providing a service site for the Catholic School Board to the appropriate standing committee, which most likely will land on IPS and somewhere in between with Community Living. But that is all.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. I think that takes us to our Corporate Services Committee meeting, and I think Counselor Plott, you're going to step in for Counselor O'Toole, who's away this evening.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'd make a recommendation that council receive the minutes from the Corporate Services meeting held Tuesday, March 27, 2018, as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor Plott. Are there any errors or omissions, anything that we need to correct before we adopt those? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Plott?
We did have a couple of recommendations come out of our, our meeting. And so the first one was that council approved the destruction of all the records listed in the schedule attached date that was in our packages, to be destroyed and properly listed and incorporated into the minutes of council, along with a signed affidavit as a witness to the destruction. So this is, that's the motion, I guess, this is basically, from what I understand, a housekeeping item that we do annually. So it's just something we need to look after doing.
Thanks very much, Counselor Plott. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Plott?
We did also have another one that was a supplementary assessment bylaw, C 1378. And so this is a bylaw that's, provides authorization for the city to assess properties having newly constructed buildings or major additions during the year. It's one of those ones I tease as a builder that I'm not a big fan of, but I totally understand that the relevance for it, watching facilities like Canadian Tire being built this year. So I would make a recommendation that we would give first reading to bylaw C 1378, being the 2018 supplementary assessment bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor Plott. So a motion for first reading. We don't have any debate on first reading. I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. Just make sure your vote's registered there, council. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Plott, hopefully you've got a glass of water over there. I see you've got a water jug close by. You've got a lot of readings to do.
I'd make a motion that we give second reading to bylaw C 1378.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Plott. Counselor Friesen, did you have some discussion or debate? Counselor Friesen?
Thank you. I just saw that there is a discrepancy between what we're, we are moving and what the bylaw number actually is. We're moving for 1378, but we have 1379.
Sure. Well, we actually, so this is, we have, 1379 will follow. This first bylaw is one that allows the city to do the assessments, and then the second one is, 1379 is the bylaw that allows us to actually-
Oh, I just jumped forward. I'm sorry. Thank you. I just jumped forward.
No, this is one of those ones where we have a couple of layers of bylaws to do one thing. But no, so it's, it's easy to get crossed up on that. Any other, Counselor Plott, say thanks for the break, for having to do motions. Is there any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, I will call for the vote on second reading. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Plott?
Thanks, Mayor Given. So I would make a motion that we have third reading of bylaw C 1379, 1379 at this meeting, or 1378 at-
Oh, see, she got you confused. We can even play that on Counselor Friesen.
Jedi mind trick me. 1378 at this meeting, please.
Thanks for a Jedi mind trick today. This is not the bylaw you're looking for? Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Plott. So this is a motion to have third and final reading here tonight. If this motion doesn't pass unanimously, then third and final reading would come back at a subsequent council meeting. Is there any discussion or debate as to the merits of having third and final reading here tonight? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. We can have third and final- That motion carries unanimously. We can have third and final reading, Councilor Plott.
Thanks. We'll hopefully wrap this one up. I'll make a motion that we give third reading to bylaw C 1378, being the 2018 supplementary assessment bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councilor Plott. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Councilor Resi?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I think something worth pointing out from the committee discussion on this is this is a bylaw that's been passed and essentially is formed for decades now. And it gives us permission to charge taxes both when a building is complete or when it's occupied. And the practice of our administration is to prorate it to when it's occupied, which is a bit of a break that they give people who build new buildings. It's giving them a break for a month or two till they're actually getting use out of the building. And it's worth highlighting because sometimes we get beat up on and people say, well, why don't you, why don't you make things easier here? Why don't you help us out? And this is a really tangible example that I wanted to highlight of we're giving developers a break as they're doing this.
Thanks very much, Councilor Resi. Thanks for highlighting that. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor Plott, you've got another, another set to go through.
Thanks, Mayor Given. So as mentioned earlier, because we're making this bylaw change, we, we need to also, according to the MGA, make a second bylaw change. So that this next one is the city giving first reading to bylaw C 1379, being the 2018 supplementary tax bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councilor Plott. No discussion or debate on first reading, so I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor Plott?
All right. I will make a motion that we give second reading to bylaw C 1379.
Thanks very much, Councilor Plott. Any discussion or debate on this motion? Seeing nobody in the queue, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries.
All right, we'll, we'll keep her going here. We'll make a motion that we have third reading of bylaw 1379 at this meeting.
Thanks very much, Councilor Plott. Any discussion or debate as to the merits of having third and final reading? As with the previous bylaw, this motion to have third and final reading must pass unanimously. If it doesn't, the final reading would come back at a subsequent council meeting. Is there any discussion or debate on having third and final reading? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. We can have third and final reading.
All right, perfect. So I will make a motion that we give third reading to bylaw C 1379, being the 2018 supplementary tax bylaw.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Plott. Any discussion or debate? It's your last opportunity on this set of bylaws. And nobody's going to take it. Okay, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Thanks very much for stepping in there, Councilor Plott. Was there anything else that you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes of that committee meeting?
Yeah, there was a couple of things. We did have CIBC would kindly come and present to committee to let us know what kind of our portfolio. And so we did receive that to report information. It was a good presentation. And there was also some conversation about I guess our election review. And so there was some, some conversation about that. I'm sure further conversation will be coming forward to a committee later date.
Thanks very much. We'll move on to 9.3, the Infrastructure and Protective Services Committee. And Councilor Blackburn, I think you're going to handle that one for us. Is that correct?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. First, I'd like to move that council receive the minutes of the Infrastructure and Protective Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, April 3, 2018, as presented.
Thanks very much, Councilor Blackburn. Are there any errors or omissions that we need to correct before we adopt that set of minutes? Again, seeing nobody ringing in, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. Motion carries. Councilor Plott, did you have something?
I just, yeah, I didn't have a chance to attend it, but I did see we had a presentation there from Uber. And I'm just wondering if we're going to have at some point, maybe a little bit more robust conversation about Uber options, which could potentially impact cabs, transits and a lot of other things. I'm not sure what the form would be to bring that up at some point.
Sure. So we have one motion arising that's not related to that topic. And so we'll make sure that we do that. But council members can obviously raise any issue that they'd like for any standing committee. That's a regular practice that we have. But the context of that letter was input into the city's transportation master plan in terms of trends and things that we may need to watch. But if council members wanted to add something to a regular committee agenda, that would be, we all have that authority and that ability. Councilor Blackburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm sorry, I lost my wording here. I'd like to thank you, have moved that council approve the request to extend the period of the subdivision endorsement of Z 14-0038 to February 23 of 2019. And speaking to that, the request is due to continued pressure on market conditions making for limited demand for the product and thereby making the, the project uneconomical at this time.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Blackburn. Any discussion or debates on the motion? Councilor Thiessen?
Just a comment. I'm going to vote in support of this, but I, I'm getting a feeling that we're getting really, really close to a time where we may be adding a huge or a smaller section of a population to our community. And and all the economic conditions at this time don't really say that a developer should start building a house right now. I'm, I'm concerned that we keep delaying it, that when we get an influx of people coming, migrating here for job opportunities to the opening of the new hospital or whatnot, or other gas plants that are being built in and around the region, that we're actually going to get into a position where the development community is rushing to put houses up as fast as they can and slapstick it together. So just a bit of caution for, for council. These requests come fairly frequently, but I think we should maybe start asking the developers the question of what would you do if tomorrow, you know, we needed 1,000 new houses? Do we A, have that inventory? Or B, are we starting that? Will that be available and ready for, for our new residents that'll be moving into the Grand Prairie region? I get concerned every time we start shutting down these subdivisions. And usually when we boom fast and bust, it puts the pressure on us and our council and our administration to sort of flex the rules a bit. And it doesn't always go in the council's favor or in the city's favor. So just a word of caution, if we see any more of these in the future, maybe we should ask some tougher questions of our developers who are asking for these time extensions.
Thanks, Councilor Thiessen. Councilor Friesen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. That, that's a fair concern. I think the development community though is I mean, they want to sell their stuff when they get their stuff to market for sure. And I know that Councilor Platt can probably speak even more clearly to this than I can, but I just think, you know, if we say we have to go ahead with these now, we're not granting time extensions, we may lose that developer. And I do think that a bird in the hand is worth two in the bush. And if we can hang on to a developer who's willing to do it for another year, that's probably a fair trade off. So I'll be certainly supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Friesen. Councilor Plott?
I will also be supporting the motion and to speak to Councilor Thiessen's concerns. I think you have very legitimate concerns. Currently, though, I would say that we have about four years of supply of what has been selling in the last 24 months. So I think it's a lot to ask industry to be so far ahead of the curve as well. And, you know, unfortunately, we live in an area where our markets ebb and flow and we don't have a lot of control over it. The scary part of forcing a developer to go ahead and put something more in the ground, obviously, it's going to have a huge impact on our bottom line. But if we flood the market with even more inventory, we're actually going to hurt pricing. So it's not necessarily a good thing for all the homeowners in Grand Prairie if we watch prices drop substantially because we flooded the market with too much product too. So I know there's a slippery slope there, but we can run a real risk as a community if we decide to flood the market with too much inventory. And we watch house prices drop by 10%. We'd have a lot of people underwater on their mortgages. So it's a delicate balance for sure.
Thanks, Councilor Plott. Councilor Resi?
On the other hand, I hope that this is a conversation we have more in depth and we have it soon because it's a need. And I and I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I think there's, there's inventory for single detached in some of those units. I don't know if there's a lot of you, a lot of inventory right now for multifamily units, especially larger developments. And I would, and I don't think that carries the same risks of flooding the market. And I think it is something that we need to be putting thought into. I don't know how appropriate it is for the municipality to be meddling with the market, encouraging the market, but it's definitely a conversation we need to be having. So I'm glad that it got brought up today.
Thanks, Councilor Resi. And I wouldn't disagree with actually any of the comments on either side of that. I would just sort of refocus council to the, the motion in front of us is for a subdivision time extension request. This is essentially a request from the landowner to have an extension in the amount of time before their approved subdivision sort of disappears. The consequence of not doing, not providing this would not necessarily be so much an impact on the available housing stock, but it would be on the sort of additional costs to the development community to restart that when they wish to go ahead. And so actually, in a way, you could see this as providing additional flexibility that allows the development community to move sooner when the market corrects, rather than having to be in a position where they'd have to go back and recirculate, replan and have additional cost and time before these lots are on. If they decide the next year that they want to move forward with subdivision, they can do it sooner because they have this request or this extension approved. If they didn't, they'd have to start from square one, in essence. So that's, so in a, in a way, we're kind of meeting, providing some additional flexibility that allows, allows the market to be better positioned to respond sooner. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor Blackburn, anything else to highlight from that set of minutes?
Yes, just a couple of things. First, the committee received the letter from the Minister of Municipal Affairs that awarded the grant to support the city's inter municipal development plan and inter municipal collaboration framework project, the one that's that involves the, the other communities that we've been working with. So it was good to see that, that grant approved. The, the one other thing that I will mention is that we received a report on the cannabis process that we're, we're undergoing at the moment. And administration proposed to have all of the bylaw amendments presented to council on the May 22 council meeting. So just an indication that things are moving forward. The, the administration for the city has done some very good work towards covering all the bases and making sure that we approach this from, from the right perspective. And that, that's about it as far as I'd like.
Thanks very much, Councilor Blackburn. And thanks for stepping in to handle that set of minutes and the recommendations. I think that handles all of our committee business, unless there was something that we missed. We have no items of correspondence this evening. And so that would bring us to our delegation business. So we had two delegations, Mr. McDonald first presenting with respect to supervised consumption site. I would look for a motion to receive that presentation for information. Councilor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that we receive that for information.
Thanks very much. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And then our second presentation was with respect to parking on 106th Avenue and other related matters, other matters. Can I have a motion to receive that presentation for information? Councilor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I guess I'll do it again. So moved for information in all parts.
Thanks very much, Councilor Thiessen. And as I committed to, I will work with administration to get a better understanding of the parking permit situation as related to the apartment building. And I'll respond back to the, the resident directly. Don't see anybody with any discussion or debate on that motion. So I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. I don't believe we have any notices of motion this evening. And so that'll take us to council member reports. And I think we only have one this evening. Councilor Friesen, you had Disabled Transportation Society.
Thank you, Mayor Given. So they did have a board meeting in the last couple of weeks and they brought into place a couple of new members onto the board, which gives us a very strong transition board for the next several months. In light of that transition board being in place, the AGM has been deferred to September. It would have ordinarily been in the spring, but it'll be deferred to September to give this board a chance to get its feet under it. And there will also be an executive director posting coming up shortly so that they get good manager in place. So things are moving along nicely there. Thank you.
Thanks very much for the update, Councilor Friesen. Were there any other reports from our external agencies, boards and commissions? Seeing none, then we'll go to council member roundtable and we'll start with Councilor Resi.
Well, thank you, Mayor Given. I decided to visit a city facility last week and play ultimate city in our leisure center. And I took a hard collision and consequently spent a lot of the last week flat on my back. So I took the opportunity to catch up on a bunch of periodicals. And one that we get a stack of is Municipal World, which I'd never really taken too big of a glance at, but I read a whole bunch of back issues. And I think the one article really stuck out to me for our council and it's regular. There's a fellow named George Cuff, I believe, who always talks about governance. And the February one especially popped out for me, especially given the conversation we just had around the subdivision time extension request, where he pointed out that quite often we talk about these little niggling issues around a council table and we get folks on the agenda. And we don't take too much time to talk about the bigger strategic issues. And I'm looking forward to us getting a strategic issues committee going, but I also hope we can have one of those bigger conversations around this table right here. I was also excited, talking about subdivision development appeals. I talked to our city manager, asking, why do we always have these come to council? And I understand that administration is under a review of what comes to council and what doesn't. And I hope that we're very supportive of getting a lot of these routine matters off of the, out of this room and out of this time slot. So we can start talking about the big issues in the city. So I'd encourage you guys, altered Muni World if you haven't read a bunch of the back issues yet.
Thanks very much, Councilor Resi. I'm glad to see that you're catching up with George Cuff. A well-known name in municipal politics across, across the country, absolutely. Councilor Minhaus? Oh, sorry, Councilor Minhaus. I turned off your mic there. My apologies. There you go.
Thank you, Mayor Will Given. I appreciate, I had a chance to go to Red Deer for National Small Center Settlement and Integration Conference for the local immigration partnership. And that was a great opportunity for me to learn a lot of stuff. Because of, when I came to Canada, there was totally different thing because I came immigrant in 74. Came to the small city. This is, the motive was this national center settlement for the small city to get more promoted than the large city, which is all the immigrant come and stay there into the large city. The purpose was, the main purpose was to, this conference was to provide the forum and input into the next IRSCC call for proposal to parity and guidance from the small center perspective. So the topic was there refugee initial settlement and ongoing sport, language sport, assessment, information, training, employment folks, employment, sport, Canadian career planning and monitoring, youth and children's sport, childcare, healthcare, mental health crisis, Francophone services, community partnership, program and service delivery, organization leadership, data collecting and reporting to organization leadership. The conclusion for this conference, the result came out to creating the document and highlighted small center communities to highest priority to call proposal CF, CFP 2019. Each program area, language, training, employment, sport, services, information, community concerning needed and settlement. At the same time, the conference created unique opportunity to share the best practice of the other. The best thing I learned was it's people were for all Canada. There was over 250 people show up in the small, less than 150,000 population, actually less than 100, but there was only one or two people were from 150. It's learning like how people come to the big city and they try to settle, but they don't move to the small city. And this is opportunity, the government, federal government putting a lot learning curve and educating the people to move to small city where the unemployment is less and they need the people to do the job. So it's opened my eyes, you know, because when I came here, it was totally different. I'll tell you again. So that's all I was there three days. So it was great.
Excellent. Thanks very much, Councilor Minhaus. Councilor Friesen?
Thank you. So March 28th and 29th, I actually was in Calgary and I attended with the Ministry of Community and Social Services truth and reconciliation training. And it was really truth and reconciliation training. And it was really quite fascinating to me. I've heard a number of stories about the experiences of residential schools and on the reserves and that and that sort of thing. And this just brought it forward again in even a more meaningful way, understanding the the similarities and differences between what they, what's experienced in Treaty Seven land, which is where I went, we heard from Blackfoot members and Treaty Eight, of course, where where we live. And it was interesting that it's, I kind of in my mind thought it was different challenges with the reserves down there, but it really isn't. It's really very similar to up here. And that just reinforced for me how that common experience for Aboriginal friends has really brought them to where they are and where we are as a society now. It was wonderful to be able to attend that in another region. And I also attended today, on a very happy note, the Summer Games barbecue fundraiser at lunch. And I happened to sit with two senior citizens, who, one of whom was new to Grand Prairie, she's been here about two years. And this, they signed up to volunteer for the Summer Games. And this is the first time either of them has ever volunteered in Grand Prairie. And I just thought that that was fantastic, that the Summer Games would bring these women out for that. I also heard that the fundraising was going really well. So I was pleased to be there today. And over the weekend, my cousin contacted me and said, have you got a spare bed? Her daughter made a basketball team that'll be up competing in the Summer Games. So that was the first of, I'm sure, a few bed requests we'll get over the coming months. So thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thanks very much councillor Friesen. Councillor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I didn't have a very eventful two weeks for council. I left after the last council meeting for family holidays. So we were, we were away from Toomah Springs, Anaheim, and San Diego. But I didn't notice in my trek, I wasn't as motivated as councillor Bressi, reading a bunch of backstories. But I did notice a lot of about the transportation systems that I went through in each city and and literally how Uber is taking over down there. And it's not something I've ever used, but it's something I'm definitely more curious about now than I've ever been before. Watched empty transit buses and lots of cabs not being utilized there as well. So it's a, it's a, it's a concern everywhere, I guess. And the market is shifting with that. Also dreamt about what it would live like in a city that didn't have dirty streets and robust downtown. And just some some challenges that we have as a community, that just other challenges that other cities just don't have. And so we have to think outside the box here a lot more than a lot of other municipalities, which I do love about the entrepreneurial community that we have in Grand Prairie for that. And it made me really respect of what the opportunities we have in Grand Prairie and speaking with a lot of locals down there. The opportunities in a lot of municipalities just aren't as good as they are in Grand Prairie. And so it made me very grateful to be where I was from. So it was a good trip.
Thanks very much councillor Plott. Councillor Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Two things I'll mention. One is that I had the pleasure at the end of March to attend the reception for the Alberta, the Association of Professional Engineers and Geoscientists of Alberta, commonly known as A P E G A. And it was great to see eight members of our community inducted into membership. And one of them being our former councillor, Dan Wong. And it was, it's just great to see this professional community growing. The second one I'll mention very briefly is that I was invited to take a personalized tour of the Creative Arts Centre. And I was amazed to see the number of different programs that are offered there and the numbers of people who take advantage of those programs, the facilities that they have in terms of art supplies, pottery supplies and machinery, all kinds of great things. I had no idea it was there. And so it's, it's good to see again that dimension of of our community.
Thanks very much councillor Blackburn. Councillor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I I wanted to say something last council meeting. I had to put it off, so I'm gonna just sort of lump a bunch of things in. You mentioned earlier that forming the opioid task force that we're coming a little bit late to the table. Well, I used to work in mental health and when it comes to naloxone training, I'm way behind on on actually knowing how to administer it. So on March nineteenth, I took part in community social development, like naloxone training session, which we had twenty members of the community from different service organizations there. I learned how to administer the naloxone, fill it and put it in there. I know, Mayor Given, you've done that yourself and other councillors too in the past, but I had not yet undertaken that. I took an extra kit and I gave it to a friend who's trying to help a family member who is a recovering opioid addict. And just in case that person falls off the rails, like he is now prepared to do the same thing. And I gave him what I learned. So hopefully I was a good teacher. Also, along those lines, what I wanted to announce last week is that on March twenty-fifth, we were awarded a provincial grant in regards to opioids, as a provincial opioid public awareness grant. Our director Koji Miyagi of Community Living had given us an update. It wasn't announced officially by the province until last week. But it was a seventy-five thousand dollar grant that's to be used for education and awareness on opioids through digital storytelling. So this is an outside the box way that where the city of Grand Prairie is reaching out to try to tell people's stories. Family members who have suffered through a person with an opioid addiction or an opioid addict who is trying to recover or still not there yet. Hopefully, this will be a good tool that'll open the eyes to the members of our community who might take a hard line stance against anybody who might be using any type of opioid in their life to cope with whatever it is they need. Also, on last Friday, I I took part in training for the point in time count, which is happening this week as well. So I'll be one of the surveyors going up and down the streets, largely in central Grand Prairie or downtown core, to essentially do a census and see where our people are at, how many people are homeless, couch surfing or otherwise. I'd like to extend the invitation for anyone who wants to volunteer. Unfortunately, you need to take part in the training in order to to do that. But I'm sure if you call Community Social Development or Terry Sudnick, they may be able to find a spot for you if on Wednesday you have nothing better to do during the evening. There is free pizza here and some juice and snacks as well. Finally, on a personal note, over the Easter long weekend, I know right now we just witnessed the world championships of curling in Beaver Lodge Zone. Jeff Walker do fairly well for Canada. We have another opportunity come November fifth for Grand Prairie to get their name on the national stage one more time as the Kurt Balderson rink won the mixed curling provincial championships down in southern Alberta, which means that they will be representing Alberta at the mixed curling national championships in Winnipeg, Manitoba, Fort Rouge from November fifth to tenth. And I only mention it because, well, I'm just a proud uncle. My niece, Janine De Jong, is playing on that team as the third. And and it's a fully Grand Prairie and area rink. So get your cheer on and prepare for the opening of curling season, which will start with hopefully a national championship win for the curling rink of Balderson from Grand Prairie.
Thanks very much councillor Thiessen. And certainly we'll cheer them on as they go. Did you just say the opening of curling season? That's depressing. We haven't even gotten rid of the snow from last winter. Thanks very much. Well, so I'll just cover a few brief events that haven't been covered by the council members. I attended with a number of other council members, the meeting with the Grand Prairie Public School District Board of Trustees with respect to long-term planning for the existing Compton High School site as they embark on the development of the new high school. I also attended at the citywide Good Friday service, was held at Revolution Place this year, was previously at Evergreen Park at the tech center. It was great to see it inside the city and great attendance at the event. And congratulations to all the churches who organize that event annually. On the third, I did a quick flight down to Edmonton for a very, very, very short meeting, where I concluded six years of having been on the Board of Alert, the Alberta Law Enforcement Response Teams Board of Directors. The board over the last year and a half had been working on a governance transformation, I guess, in the organization. And so the Board of Governor, or the Board of Directors formally handed off the duties by appointing new people to the Board of Directors. The Board of Directors of Alert is now the executive, the executive committee of the Alberta Association of Police Governant, sorry, of police chiefs. So the Board of Directors of Alert is now the chiefs of police from a number of the different services across the province, including some of the First Nations communities. And the R C M P K division is represented by the Deputy Commissioner for K Division. So that ended my time on the board. At the same time, we also created what is unique and joint. So Alert is a joint forces operation where you have police from a number of different services working together. And these are common across Canada. Alert's a little bit unique. And it's gonna about to get even more unique because in our deliberations, we created a civilian advisory committee. And so there isn't a joint forces operation in Canada that has a civilian advisory committee. So we created that. And we will wait for people to be appointed to that. But I just wanted to bring to council's attention that I'm finished my time on the Board of Alert and know that the organization is in very good hands with the chiefs of police from across the province now being the representatives on that board. And look to Alert to do good, more, more good work in communities across the province like Grand Prairie. And then finally, on Thursday, the fifth, the number of members of council and I were out in Heith to attend the intermunicipal meeting with all the municipalities within the county of Grand Prairie. It was a great opportunity to hear from Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association, the Grand Prairie Regional College, and to speak about a number of issues that are of common interest and common concern to all the municipalities. And so certainly appreciated the opportunity for all of us to join in with all of our municipal neighbors to discuss issues that affect our region. And with that, if there wasn't anything else, I'll call our meeting adjourned. Thank you.